Is to his right, to my left, we have Mr. Hillis, Ms. Winston, and Ms. Collier-Overstreet. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda, second by Juan. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
The agenda has been adopted. I'll move approval of the minutes, second by Juan. Let's open that vote. All right, the minutes have been adopted. That brings us to public comment. We do have one person signed up, former chief of staff Greg Frijgen. Mr. Frijgen, you're gonna have to mash the red button there.
It's green now.
Thank you.
Perfect. Good afternoon to members of the Finance Executive Committee. I am Greg Frijgen, an old friend, served for most of my life here at City Hall and retired as Mayor Franklin's chief of staff. There's a piece of legislation that's before you that's been held for a minute, but we haven't ironed out all the wrinkles at this point. So I hope that you will continue to hold the legislation until such time as we've had a chance to have robust dialogue with the Law Department and see if there's a way forward. Thank you all very much for your consideration, and I look to see you back here very soon after your break.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your patience. I need to get with Ms. Robinson kind of for an update on where we are. I think she's taken the lead in doing the analysis and evaluation.
I've spoken to her briefly. She's been very gracious with her time, and I look forward to working with her.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a very lengthy agenda, and this agenda is the only thing standing between us and spring break. And we have several presentations today. I will ask the presenters to be concise. But before we do that, let's deal with our single communication so we can get this person on boarded here. This is 25C0042, a communication from Mayor Dickens, reappointing Mr. Dargan Burns to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Audit Committee. Appointment is for a term of four years, beginning retroactively December 7th of last year and expiring December 6th of '28. Is the nominee here? The nominee is apparently not here. All right, we'll come back to this should he appear.
Excuse me, Councilman Shuck. Mr. Burns is supposed to be here today. I don't know if it's possible to hold this until after the presentations?
Yeah, we'll hold, we'll set this aside and come back to it in the event that he's able to make it.
Thank you.
Okay, so fine, that takes us to our Investland and Financial Update.
Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Aloisa Clemente, president and CEO. This will be a quick summary. If there's any information you would like in additional or want me to deep dive, please don't hesitate to let me know. So as the presentation comes up, do we have a presenter? Okay, I'll keep going. The Tax Allocation District will have an update and then three small business programs. So as you know, we have 10 tax allocation districts, of which two have been dissolved, who are on eight. These are the goals and objectives of the Tax Allocation District Summit to say that this, in some areas, is the only tool I have to ensure that we are promoting the objectives that you see on the screen. This gives you a summary of what we were able to produce in 2024. I'd say just highlighting $2.6 million in TAD increment financing to leverage $431 million for the City of Atlanta as a result of our activity. These are the projects that we have in the city for 2024 to give you a visual. This is just so you have for your records more details specifically about each project, where they are, and what their economic impact is for the city. I'll highlight some that I haven't highlighted in the past. Top picture is 3,500 MLK. This is going to be transformed from a family dollar to a community food center. This is different than a community food bank in the sense that individuals will be able to come in and you can either one side buy and purchase, just like any regular store, and then those that are part of the program will be able to choose the products that they need. What's crucial about this is that it's actually in a food desert, so it really helps us to begin to address something that's very important to all of us. On the bottom, 471 English Avenue, I'm excited about this project because several years ago I spoke to this, to the council about community builders. This was as a result in the West Side, individuals, community members told us, "Aloisa, please, we don't want development to happen to us. Let us be part of the development." Well, as a result, one individual participated in our program, went through the education program, went to the pre-development, and now is actually going to be able to develop four housing, excuse me, five affordable housing units at the site. They're renting out four and one they'll live at. So this is really about how community can be empowered as well to make a difference in their own city. 410 Marketing Mark is going to be a small business incubator in the West Side TAD. This is a vacant brownfield site. They're gonna turn it into a culinary kitchen. It's a shared kitchen. As you know, there are many small entrepreneurs that need access to a kitchen. What's excited about this is that they're gonna build on top a 30-room hotel, and that will be the revenue stream to sustain the community kitchen. So we're excited about what the model and long-term impact. On the bottom is, if many of you are familiar with the yellow store. This was an important part of the West Side that really needed redevelopment. We were able to issue an RFP, awarded it to the West Side Future Fund. They'll be receiving a $750,000 grant to turn this into commercial on the bottom and four residential units at the top for permanent affordable housing. This is the total activity for 2024, 1,301 total housing units, of which 1,160 are affordable as a result of 2024. In 2025, I'm just gonna highlight three that are important that we have awarded. The first is 143 Alabama. 143 Alabama is gonna really come in two phases. Phase one has actually a Phase 1A and a Phase 1B. Phase 1A is stabilized for World Cup. So you're gonna see the picture on the right. It's how do we look at NICE, and then how do we activate the bottom floor? So it potentially could be a place for people to gather and see some of the games. Then Phase 2 is going of Phase, Phase 2 of Phase 1, so 1B technically, is gonna convert the building into 46 affordable housing units that range anywhere from 30% to 80% AMI. Then the Phase 2 of this project will bring on 151 affordable housing units for a $3.5 million West Side TAD grant. The next, the middle picture is Generation Atlanta. This is a 336-unit downtown structure. What we were able to do is with the $4 million West Side TAD grant, we were able to create 66 units of affordable housing at 60% AMI for 30 years. So this is another way we can bring in more affordable housing quicker. And the bottom photo is an image to redevelop a single-family lot that West Side Future Fund was able to redevelop, and this will bring four single-family lots. In closing, I'll just highlight really quickly three small business programs. The first, thanks to the City Council and the mayor, will be launching the Atlanta Local Legacy Program. Woo, I'm excited. This will be our opportunity to recognize those residents that have been, and those businesses that have been in the city for 30 years. It's officially launching April 1st, so you should have an invitation in your mailboxes so that you can attend. I just wanted to highlight, if someone asks you, Aloisa, or council member, what are the components of this legacy program? Five components. The first is a registry, marketing, an empowerment grant, and small business improvement grant, technical assistance for food access. So the local legacy, we are gonna push really hard. So think about, how do I ensure B-to-B, business-to-business, and B-to-C, business-to-consumer? So when we think about business-to-consumer, we're working with our partners at The Chamber, Showcase Atlanta. So if you're coming into town for World Cup, for example, and we ask these big corporations, "Hey, you're gonna be catering, you're gonna be hosting your events, please use our local legacy businesses," oftentimes they say, "Yes, no problem," but who are they? And so that's why this registry is so important. So it will work for B-to-C, and then you, as a consumer, you will be able to find them as well. So if you wanna eat your favorite wings by a local legacy minority business owner, you'll be able to find them in our city very quickly. The next is that we were gonna do marketing and promotions. You're gonna see several promotions of different kinds, but we are putting this sticker on businesses. They'll receive a certificate and a sticker so that they can showcase from the outside very quickly those that are part of this program. Currently, I should state there are about 450 businesses that fall into this program as of today. Then if you're in a TAD, if you're outside of a TAD, we have $5,000 grants to help businesses with marketing, professional service, technical improvements. This idea is to ensure that if you're here for 20 years, 30 years, you'll be here for another 30 years. How do we provide augmentation to what the business does? If you're inside a TAD, we'll be leveraging our small business improvement grants that provide facade improvements or interior exterior property improvements, up to $50,000 for you to go through this process. So again, key date, April 1st is our launch, and we are out and about at an actually meeting with businesses to let them know. Just wanna let you know that the next woman cohort will be starting in Q2, and that program continues to provide support for our businesses, women-owned businesses in the city. And please note that this is the only municipally-funded women's incubator in the nation. Very proud of the work that they continue to do. And then lastly, for any businesses in your district, we are doing Small Business Town Hall webinar series where we're asking businesses, "What is impacting your business growth, and how can we be your partner? We, Investland and the city, be your partner to continue your success in our city?" And I'll open up to any questions, Chair.
All right, thank you. We had been joined by Ms. Bakary. I've just got one real quick one, and then I'll open it up, everyone else. I'm curious, how many, do you know what percentage of businesses make it to year 30?
I'd have to go back to look, but if we have about 10,000 businesses in the city, give or take, I'm gonna CFO, right? 20? Okay, so to 20,000, so 450, so math, what percentage of that?
No.
Small. Well, 20 would be, 2,000 would be 10%, so 2%.
He's cheating.
Uh, thank you. 2%. If we were to, now statistically, I would have to look how many businesses were started 30 years ago, but as if we were to compare it today, which is not apples to apples, but it's 2% of our businesses.
Okay. I guess I'm not surprised to hear that, all things considered. All right, others? Mr. Juan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this may be for the CFO. The Atlantic Station TAD dissolution means that the tax increments were, not increments, the tax returned back to each of the participating jurisdictions as of the FY '26 budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, a little bit in '25 and then in '26 budget. I think we received about $1.5 million in '25, and we'll receive the full increment for the '26 budget, which is about $7 million.
The $1.5 was just the accumulated unspent increment. So, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bakary.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Clemente, for being here today and for the presentation. Just a couple follow-up questions. One, I noticed that, again, I wanted to thank you all, year one, when we did the Section 8 housing piece, about anybody who's coming for public dollars from Invest would have to register with the line of housing and accept Section 8 vouchers. Is there any, could your team give an update on that and how that's been going?
I can't.
Thank you. Two, I wanted to thank you all so much for coming and doing the event at Bessie Brandon with our seniors, and I was hoping I could follow up on that and get kind of the backlog of information we talked about for some of our seniors, if we can get that. Thank you. And I was just gonna ask about our grocery store initiative. I wanted to thank you all again because the grocery store initiative with Invest, for those who don't know, we came up with a deal with Gooder in record time for District 5 in the Sweet Auburn neighborhood, which is a huge food desert. So I just wanted to check to see if we were on track with that project.
Yes, it's my understanding they should be open by end of Q3, Q2, if not, beginning of Q3.
And for those, for the tens of viewers watching, including some of my seniors in Sweet Auburn, could you kind of give an idea of what that month is?
Okay, so March, April, May, July?
Great.
July-ish.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be inside with lots of air conditioning. Sounds good. I appreciate you all and all the work that you have been doing. I will follow up with some additional questions around affordability.
Okay.
Oh, one other question, small businesses. I have a number of small, obviously, we have the Main Street program, and, you know, we weren't sure we were gonna be able to give funds to that, but our finance team figured it out. I do have a question about, because one of my biggest concerns is small businesses, and this is not solely on Invest, but small businesses getting run out with the costs increasing like we are seeing. And my biggest fear is that we're either gonna have empty storefronts or massive chains that come through, and it's actually gonna create a rise in public safety issues because we won't have eyes on the street. Is there any long-term planning around wealth building or talking about a partnership between Invest and the city of actually doing what some larger cities are doing and actually buying commercial space to keep it low barrier? So we're doing things like expanding the Sweet Auburn, the sweet, the curb market in Sweet Auburn, expanding initiatives like that one.
I'll tell you, that's why we're doing these town halls, because we wanna hear what the issues are. What challenges do businesses have? We have some assumptions. We've been hearing them, but we wanna make sure that we've got it right. So once we've gone through those, then we will be preparing a report and we'll be presenting them. And at that time, then I'll have a better sense of, yes, the majority of businesses are saying this is the issue, and this is how we, we're suggesting that we could potentially address those. So, more to come.
Thank you. And just so you know, we're launching, I'm launching with the Reynolds Town neighborhood and Housing Justice League, a senior door-knocking program in Reynolds Town for 62 and up. It's our pilot initiative, so I will be reaching about, out about similar to what you're saying with these town halls, finding out what people need and seeking if we can work with Invest to tailor the approach with meeting people where they are and finding out what their issues are.
Yeah, and I would just take this opportunity to remind everyone that the anti-displacement program is citywide, and it opens from May 1st to May 31st. So anyone, any senior you're talking to who you think may qualify, just don't have them guess, just call the number and ask, and we'll walk them through to see if they qualify. So taking advantage that you're already out there, please make sure they know.
Will do. Thank you.
Ms. Overstreet.
Thank you. And just like everyone else, I appreciate your presentation. Your theme throughout your presentation today was meeting people where they are. And so I just want to give you kudos for that, because every neighborhood needs something different. And I do appreciate the fact that you've got so many different initiatives happening on different fronts. And that's, that's important, being innovative throughout the city, reaching the challenge areas and things that we need in different ways. So much so that I do want everyone to know how thrilled I am with the work that you've been doing in my district surrounding food insecurities. Like, we've really touched on all four quadrants of District 11 in a way that's so helpful to those that, where there aren't big grocery stores, especially Campbellton Road. I know that particular one is not open yet, but I feel good and sharing with you now the fact that we sat down with Chief Sheerbaum, Atlanta Police Foundation was there, Invest Atlanta, and my office to talk around security and making sure that we have a nice plan where patrolling is there, cameras, lights, the business owner that owns the plaza, where Invest Atlanta is actually partnering with Savvy Provisions to open the only grocery store on Campbellton Road. So it is important that we literally blanket them to make sure that people feel safe coming to the grocery store and that all of the belongings that walk out the door are paid for. And it, it sounds really simple, but what happens is you definitely don't know how things are going to go, because there hasn't been a grocery store, a real grocery store in the area in a really long time. So we're trying to make sure we're looking from all different lenses. We're also talked about the fact that there will be a gathering spot there with the, with the coffee shop coming. And so that's another different behavior in that particular corridor that we want to make sure is rolled out in a way that is successful from day one and that we're protecting and bringing as many people there as we possibly can. So I just, you know, I know that we're all on a journey and that nothing happens overnight. I'm ready for that grocery store to open, for sure. But I do want you to know that I recognize that you are really trying a lot of different things in different areas. I mean, none of these stories sound exactly the same. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Ayo.
Ms. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman Shuck. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick request. To get a balance sheet of what funds are available allocated versus unallocated also in all of the TADs.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would like to thank you and your team, as usual, for continuing to punch well above your weight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is a Department of Procurement Quarterly Update. We have handouts. Was this, was it just, just the handout? Outstanding. That takes us...
Does he need to count?
I know.
Okay.
That takes us to, let's go back to our communication. Is Mr. Burns here? All right, we'll continue to set that aside and...
He's here.
Oh, he is here. Thank you. Come on up. I've already sounded the caption, so thank you for your willingness to continue serving.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me.
Do we have any questions for the nominee? A motion to approve by Winston, second by Juan. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
And the vote is closed. All right, I'm approved, 6-0. We're welcome, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you sound our first reads, please?
Item number 2, 2501182, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta, Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to ratify services and to execute the First Amendment to the sole source agreement listed here, maintenance and services for E911, MARA1 CAD and PREMARA1 Mobile with Mobile Solutions Inc. to add the scope of services, a systems manager, and add additional funding on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management, Atlanta Police Department, Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, and the Department of Aviation in an amount not to exceed $255,179.10. All contracted work be charged to and paid from the Fund Department and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 3, 2501183, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need on behalf of the City of Atlanta to ratify and accept services received from Softail Communications at a value of $75,000.0 under the End Customer Investment Fund supplier agreement with Softail Communications and Microsoft Corporation at no cost to the city and for other purposes. 2501184, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to execute. Amendment number 1 to agreement listed here, citywide preventative maintenance program for HVAC services with Aris MEP Inc. to add funding for various HVAC repairs on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management and to add the Department of Aviation as an authorized user for a total amount not to exceed $1,150,000.0. All contracted work be charged to and paid from the Department Organization and account number listed herein. Item number 5, 2501185, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need to amend Task Order Number Here under contract listed here, Job Order Contracting Services Small with Soco Contracting Company, Inc., to add additional funding for Department of Procurement repairs and renovations on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed $432,260.70. All work to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 6, 2501186, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need to retroactively reinstate, amend, and ratify the lease with North Fulton Regional Radio System authority and to exercise the 10-year renewal option to continue leasing space on or adjacent to telecommunications tower located at 3201 Roswell Road for the purpose of operating certain communication equipment associated with the regional public safety radio system. All revenue generated from said lease to be deposited into the account number listed here and for other purposes. And that concludes the first reads.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll take those up at our next sitting. I'm wondering if your mic is on.
Was it on?
It's on, is it on?
Okay.
It's very quiet.
I'm sorry.
I don't wanna read those again.
All right, and so for those of you, and our tens of viewers, the electronics are all new here, so there's still some bugs, and plus, we're learning how to use them. That takes us to our regular agenda, the first three items. I will read the caption and then entertain a motion to hold, as they are all three budget-related shell papers, first of which is 2501147, is an ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the section of the city code indicated here to set the ad forum tax rate for the general levy, bonded indebtedness levy, parks levy, education levy, special tax district levy, and the Atlanta Beltline Special Service District levy based on every $1,000 or part thereof of the value of all real and personal property to provide that the tax rates established herein shall remain fixed until amended or repealed, to amend ordinance number blank and for other purposes. 2501148 is an ordinance by Finance Exec to set the ad forum tax rate, the general levy, bonded indebtedness levy, parks levy, education levy, special tax district levy, and the Atlanta Beltline Special Service District levy based on every $1,000 or part thereof of the value of all real and personal property to provide that the tax rates established herein shall remain fixed until amended or repealed and for other purposes. 2501139 is an ordinance by Finance Exec adopting the FY '26 proposed budget to include all funds, to authorize any necessary adjustments to ensure the proper closeout of FY '25 for all funds and for other purposes. Motion to hold.
Second.
Second by Juan. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed. 780 nays.
All right, and Mr. Balla, when is it that we should be expecting to actually receive the budget?
We are on track to produce the budget book in the first Monday of May. Yeah, first Monday of May.
All right. I'm sure we're all looking forward to that. 2501150 is an ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the code section listed here to update the provisions relating to the composition of the retirement, of the management committee of the defined contribution retirement plan and for other purposes. I will make a motion to bring forward a substitute, second by Overstreet. Let's, let's have that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Substitute is before you.
And so the... Okay, so this attaches the following documents. This is a letter from the CFO, CFO Letter to the DC Management Committee, Non-Binding Recommendation of DC Management Committee, Actuarial Analysis, and City Attorney Letter to the Council President.
Move approval on substitute.
I will second that. Let's open that vote if there's nothing else.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed. 780 nays.
And it has, have it. 2501151 is an ordinance by Finance Exec. I'd ask, have it, 2501151 is an ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the 2025 capital finance budget and the 2025 general fund budget by undertaking an operating transfer and adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed $10,633,015 and for other purposes. Mr. CFO.
Counsel, thank you. This project was originally from, source of funding was from the general fund that committed fund balance to go to a project at 143 Alabama Street that will no longer be pursuing. So, we closing that project out, returning the funds back to flow through to the general fund and ultimately landing the committed fund balance with less any additional expenses that the Department of Planning is coordinating for their different move to a different location.
Mr. Juan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in briefing CFO Bala, I had asked about whether this, the original source of the funds was from the restricted enterprise balance, and you said no. And so, just a quick follow-up question. So, in our reserve or surplus fund, there still is a small portion that is from the original enterprise fund. What's the approximate balance of that?
I'd have to get the committed fund balances, but it's dwindled down to somewhere less than five million now. But I'm not sure I can confirm and send you the exact number.
Yeah, if you could get that, that'd be fantastic. Thank you. I'll move approval on this item.
I will second that. Seeing no other questions or comments, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed. Seven yes, zero nays.
I'd ask, have it, so order 2501152 is an ordinance by Finance Exec waiving the Code section listed here to execute the Seventh Amendment to the contract listed ATL Cloud Implementation and Post-Implementation Support Services with Deloitte Consulting on behalf of the Department of Finance to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis effective September 7th of this year for a period not to exceed 12 months in an amount not to exceed $5,986,500. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera.
Move approval. Second.
All right, this motion by Juan, second by Hillis. I kind of double-clutched here. I'm looking at the total amount authorized to date for this. I mean, I guess the City of Atlanta and Deloitte are in a very Catholic marriage. Having said that, having said that, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And vote is closed. Seven yes, zero nays.
Items approved. That amount, by the way, is $36,47,563.62. That takes us to 2501153, and there's a substitute which I will move to bring forward. Second by Juan. Let me read the caption. This is an ordinance by Finance Exec for a 15th supplemental bond ordinance to authorize the execution, delivery, and performance of a First Amendment of Declaration of Easements to supersede and waive all resolutions and ordinances or parts of resolutions and ordinances that conflict with the provisions of this 15th supplemental bond ordinance and for other purposes. So, let's open that procedural vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right, it's before us.
Move to approve on substitute.
I will second that. Seeing no questions or comments, let's open that vote.
Vote is closed. Seven yes, zero nays.
Items approved on substitute. That takes us to 2501158, and I will make a motion to bring forward a substitute for it. Second by Mr. Juan. So, the caption's different. This is an ordinance by Mr. Bond authorizing the CFO to create the Affordable Workforce Housing In-Lu Fee Trust Fund for the purpose of anticipating and appropriating the proceeds of in-lu fees and administrative costs, revenues generated by in-lu fees and administrative costs paid pursuant to the city's various affordable workforce housing programs to apply these funds toward the production and preservation of affordable workforce housing citywide and for other purposes. So, let's open that procedural vote.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, Dean. Yes. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Will Tucker, Office of Policy. Happy to answer any questions about this particular paper or the next one, but just to give you kind of an overview, this is part of a larger effort we're doing in terms of retooling some existing density bonuses that are in the zoning code. So, there's currently papers that would amend the MRC3 density bonus for affordable housing, as well as the SPI16, that's Midtown density bonus for affordable housing. At the same time, we're trying to restructure the existing trust funds that each of the IZ chapters, inclusionary zoning chapters contain such that they are no longer fragmented into three different trust funds that capture very little funding, but can actually be, you know, collected at scale and then deployed to more effectively preuse and preserve affordable housing.
All right, I see there's a second piece of legislation. Why don't you go ahead and present that, and then I'll read that caption in as well, and we can vote on them both together and ask questions on both.
Happy to, sure. So, I mentioned trying to cut down sort of fragmentation of the existing trust funds. SPI16 is one kind of exception to that, only insofar as the SPI16 density bonus is actually pretty powerful, and we think there will be quite a few projects that can take advantage of that to produce additional affordable housing. So, we agreed with our folks, you know, Midtown Neighbors Association that it would be appropriate to sort of ring fence those funds geographically to the Midtown neighborhood.
All right, let's do this. If there's no objection, let me propose to bring in the substitute for that second paper, and then we can consider them both together. Is there a second to bring in?
Second.
Companion, second by Juan. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open.
All right, it's before us. The caption's different. Let me sound it. This is an ordinance by Mr. Bond authorizing the CFO to create the Midtown Affordable Housing In-Lu Fee Trust Fund for the purpose of anticipating and appropriating the proceeds of in-lu fees and administrative costs paid pursuant to the Affordable Housing Density Bonus Program provided in the SPI16 Midtown Special Public Interest District to apply these funds toward the production and preservation of affordable workforce housing in the Midtown neighborhood and for other purposes. So, the papers are now both for us and, okay, Ms. Bakteri, I think you're first.
Thank you, Will. Thank you. As always, the mustache is very impressive. Councilmember Shuck has been trying to grow one for some time. But no, I will go ahead and ask my questions, first starting with item number 14, 25-0-1158. Just had a couple of questions. Obviously, I love anything with affordable workforce housing, but I was curious, are there limitations on where funds paid and can be used? I'll let you answer that first.
Yeah, sure. So, not contemplated by this paper. All we're really doing is trying to create the trust fund. This is actually repurposing an existing moribund trust fund of the same name that's never been used. So, basically just redirecting the account string. But our intention is to, you know, we're going through the NPU process right now and sort of trying to pitch this, this whole suite of changes that are going to include, you know, an update to the in-lu fee schedule, which has been the same for 2017. It's quite overdue for, for an update. So, we're going out to the community and showing folks what those new numbers kind of look like, what the new methodology looks like, such that city planning can reproduce it in subsequent years more easily.
Yeah.
And I think thus far, the feedback we've gotten is, you know, folks have been very happy to see where the new fees are probably going to end up, and it's really just a question of how do we want to distribute those.
So, what you're saying is also that in lieu of funds that are paid into one district, they can be created, they can be spent to create or preserve affordable housing in another district?
Potentially. So, right now, the way that the IZ chapter is set up, not in the zoning code, but in Chapter 54, I believe, the Community Development section, is that the funds that are collected in particular sub area have to be spent in that sub area or an adjacent sub area. And one of the things we found is that it makes it very difficult to actually collect funds at appreciable scale to really deploy them effectively. So, thinking through, you know, ways that we could pool those more effectively, one could be using perhaps the impact fee service areas, such that you're keeping Southside dollars on the South Side, Southwest on the Southwest, et cetera, but you could still have, you know, enough of a scale of funding to really put it to work.
I have some follow-up questions on that, but I'll continue with a couple of things because while that can be the case, we also know that it can slide really extreme in the opposite direction. So, I wanted to ask, what determines where and what project funds are dispersed? Is it going to be us, the council, the mayor? Is there a board that's in place or some other body that will help make the determination on how funds are utilized and spent?
Yeah, great question. So, you know, all of that is still yet to be legislated. This basically would just create the fund to eventually operationalize, but we want to work closely with y'all on figuring out how that structure and governance looks.
I understand that. I feel that we are putting, like with things like that, we put the cart before the horse because those are the details we should be talking about before passing legislation because, and I know, Will, this is not you, this is a team of folks, and I know we're trying to move because of the current political climate and the need to meet these numbers, and I understand all of that. But I also, I also believe that the devil's in the details, and we want long-term success. And so, I'm worried about the fact that that has not been created. I'm guessing that this will be utilized by the executive offices and understandably, but I'm confused, I would like to know, will that determination be based on need? Are they the areas that are most impacted by development, such as like my district, Council District Six, what is beginning to be Council District 11 or where they want to go? Is it where we're seeing the greatest loss of affordable housing? Because again, we see that a lot on the East Side and beginning to happen on the West End in Southwest Atlanta. So, how will, how will that be determined?
Yeah, those are all great points. And, you know, to be clear, we're slowly chipping away at this thing. We realize that it's kind of a long process, and this is one of the more unglamorous sort of, you know, technical finance sides, but, you know, our office is completely comfortable with having this held, as well as the other companion paper, working through some of those details, and then once council feels comfortable, you know, bringing those back up.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And my last question about, well, about this piece, because I didn't have questions about item 15, is are there specific criteria or metrics that will be utilized to determine where affordable housing will be constructed or preserved? Because I, I mean, I think data, I think we should always be basing things on data rather than blindly trying to plug in, plug holes in, even though I know there are a lot of them.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I mean, we look forward to talking through those details. I think we have, you know, elements we can pull out from the Housing Needs Assessment that we've been working on that could inform that and kind of form an evidence base to drive some of that decision-making. You know, I think on the flip side, you know, one thing we've learned, I think through the IZ process to date is the more that we hamstring ourselves in the, in the code, you know, really codify things, can limit sort of opportunities to be opportunistic down the road.
Understood. I appreciate that feedback. I will say that, I will name that what I'm concerned about is the fact that the details aren't fleshed out yet, and to do it after the fact of legislation being signed, we know that can be difficult to alter. And I think most troubling, like the biggest concern for me is putting guardrails on how the money can be spent, whether it's, since right now, it feels like there is a possibility, not saying that would be the intention, but with the possibility there for money to be generated by one district only to be taken by another without proper metrics or a board in place, I do think that there have to be guardrails thought out on that. So, that was my question for item 14. If you, okay, moving on to item 15, which obviously is the Midtown Affordable Housing Workforce Housing in-Lu Fee Trust Fund. So, as written, it seems like funds are being deployed in Midtown, and so it creates a new in-lu of fund for Midtown. All right. Will these funds be required to be spent for the creation or preservation of affordable housing in only Midtown?
Yes.
Districts? Okay. So, given that that's the case, and I'm happy to hear that, I'm confused as to why we haven't done the same with item 14.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, to my point earlier, I think that we kind of looked at the numbers of what's been generated over the last five years in terms of projects, either MRC, in MRC3 outside of an SPI or in SPI16, and we tried to run the numbers on, okay, how many of these could actually take advantage of this bonus and would be likely to do so?
Okay.
Or you could have infusions of affordability in what would otherwise be just market rate, less intensive development. It kind of came to the conclusion that, that Midtown is, you know, Midtown and Upper West Side are the two, going to be the two kind of drivers of that. And so, in discussions with, you know, the stakeholders and community in SPI16 and Midtown, it seemed, you know, appropriate to kind of ring fence those because there's none of that concern of raising enough funding to actually deploy it effectively.
Understood. Thank you. I will say, Mr. Chair, I will say that I do have different, differing opinions on each of these papers. I don't feel that I can vote on them together. So, I just wanted to flag that. Will, I appreciate the questions. I mean, I don't see an issue with item 15. I do with item 14. In terms of your offer to keep it held, I greatly appreciate that because I think there's a lot more. I think, I think we're on the way to a great paper. I just think it needs to be baked a bit more. So, I just wanted to name that upfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juan.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask you to move your microphone up closer because you talk fast and I can catch everything you're saying. Yeah. First thing is, I'm going to open with a motion to hold both items. I'm not ready on the second one either. But I do want to clarify a couple of things. You said that you intend to revisit the in-lu fee schedule, correct?
That's right.
And that you have not set up the governance yet in terms of, you know, if you would follow a quadrant mole approach in terms of how the funds were spent, as well as the metric. So, I, there's definitely unreadiness on my part, and I've written down the same thing, cart before the horse. I think we're, we got to get those things figured out before we start creating and moving money. It's always better to have that because of the dangers that were listed before. I did want to lean in a little bit to the thing about, it says, whereas to date, the trust funds have been seldom utilized and have yet to collect sufficient funds to achieve their desired purpose. Do you think that's a function of the fee schedule, or is it a function of the activity? Because those are, would be the two levers in terms of what would drive what's been collected, correct?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. So, in terms of the fee schedule, you know, like I said, it's long overdue for an update. We've been working hand-in-hand with DCP for the last year or more to get that updated, and we feel like we're really close. In terms of what has been a hindrance to really driving enough revenue collection to put it, to work effectively, I think it's more so the existing geographic ring fences, which is not to say that we should throw the baby out with the bathwater and completely get away, you know, from that structure, but, you know, when you've got one fee that you're collecting on the East Side in Sub Area Four, Sub Area Five, and then several years later, 500K that you collect, you know, in Sub Area One, and you're only able to deploy those in that existing sub area or adjacent, I mean, you know, it's, it can do a small amount of gap finance really, but it's not enough to, you know, move forward a really catalytic project.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, particularly on 14, I suspect I'm, holding it one cycle isn't going to be enough time for me because I would want to see, once you revisit the fee schedule, if that helps generate enough funds to get critical mass before we go to what I think is a pretty radical solution in terms of, of opening it up for application citywide. I think we've got to exhaust all possible approaches before we come to this. I think the second, what was the second thing I want to say? Wow. I don't remember. Yeah, the Midtown one, I think, is a little different in that it does stay in the area, although I, my question there is, it's funds generated within the SPI, but then it can be used within the M&amp;A boundary. And so, I, at some point, I'd like to see kind of what that overlap looks like.
Sure.
What the additional applicable areas would be. I think it'll make sense, but at the same time, it, that's a piece of information we would need. I know what, the last thing I want to say is, I'll be honest with you, I'm coming into this with a little bit of skepticism in terms of these funds because I think we've learned over the last six months alarming instances where funds that we have set up with certain intent have not been deployed the way we had intended them to deploy, be deployed. And so, especially when you start talking about moving money that's generated in one area and applying it to others, the hamstrings that you've mentioned, I wrote down that word too, I think are good because it keeps us honest and it keeps the opportunity of spending money outside of its original purpose. It helps prevent that. Final question, this may be for law. Absent of this action, wouldn't we still have the opportunity if we, for example, the Office of Policy came back and said... the Office of Policy came back and said, hey, we've got this great project and we need to just tap into other funds? Couldn't we waive the restrictions and the limitation, the geographical limitations specifically for that project on a case-by-case basis versus creating this big kind of free-for-all? I mean, I almost surgically do it that way, where we are affirming by council action that, hey, we, we believe policy-wise, we should unwrap the geographic boundaries a little bit for the sake of this project as a singular application versus a blanket citywide thing.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. Yes, I believe so. From a legal standpoint, there would be no reason why you couldn't do it on a case-by-case basis for, with an individual piece of legislation for each action.
So I will say, I mean, to the extent that when you get all this information, if there's still not readiness in terms of council position, don't forget, you always have that path so that it doesn't preclude great, us missing great opportunities. But this just seems like a pretty blunt and quite frankly risky move, short of all the other steps. So, yeah, again, I put a motion to hold on both items.
All right, we've got a motion to hold. It's been made and seconded. We'll continue with discussion, Ms. Overstreet.
Well, I've really heard most of the same questions that I have. Definitely have unreadiness because I've not had one real conversation about either 14 or 15. And I don't see a lot of attachments to show me which account streams you're talking about or, you know, where the funds are that, you know, exactly what's being pulled to put where. And I need all of that in order to understand how we are making better use of those small underutilized funds. I just need to know more. And I always have a, an issue of us feeding the things that are easiest to get fed. And that means, a lot of times when projects are shovel-ready or an area is already on the, on the come up and all they need is a little more, I don't always find that the best place to jump in and make everything happen. No problem with making sure that we have great development in the areas where we need it. But we also have to work harder to utilize those captured funds for areas that need it the most. And sometimes that is harder to do. The, the areas that are heavy in mom and pops that need more development, we need to figure out a plan for them as well. So not that I would be against 14 or 15 because of where they are, I certainly wouldn't be. I mean, I utilize Midtown quite often and West Side also. But I don't know that just coming up with a plan and legislating it is the same as making sure that we're doing the right thing by, by putting the, by giving all of the information, that's first, we don't have all the information we need. Or just saying, guess what, we don't use these funds, we might as well just put them there. We need more information than that. So that's where I am with it. And I do think that, you know, during budget season, we do, we get a book and we see several areas of these small amounts of dollars that is not enough for even a couple of our $700 trashcans that go up and down our, in our park areas or, we have a lot of things that, a lot of little items. I understand exactly what you all are saying. However, I do think that there has to be a process in order to extract those. And I don't see that here.
Understood. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Overstreet, and honestly, thank all of you. This has been really constructive feedback, and we look forward to working through some of these details and coming up with something that everyone feels comfortable with. If I could just quickly address two points you raised. First of all, absolutely, what you said about not just taking the path of least resistance and trusting a developer telling you, hey, I've got this gap, come fix it, that's exactly what I think we want to get away from and what we're trying to be more creative about is, you know, raising money at, at the levels where you can really do something creative and outside of the box that can have more of an impact than kind of business as usual necessarily. And, oh, the second point I wanted to raise, and I apologize if this alarmed anyone, but these two papers, just to be clear, do not propose actually transferring any funds, it's simply just creating the structure for these two funds. So I apologize if I didn't clarify that earlier.
Okay. And I probably don't know as much as I should because I've not had any conversations around it. I'm only going by what I've read in these small captions and the, there is not like an attachment here or anything that would show me any more guidance other than what these words are. So I'm looking forward to seeing exactly what the Folsom project would look like for both papers and happy to give feedback as, as we go through the whole process.
Absolutely.
For sure.
Ms. Bakary.
Councilmember One, just, in a minute. No, thank you. I just wanted to also ask, I understand the need to move these things forward, but I'm going to piggyback off of what Councilmember Overstreet said and say that we aren't getting enough notice on projects of this size. We are the legislative and policy arm, and I think we need to be able to think through these things more carefully, especially when we all know that our resources are becoming increasingly finite over these next few years. So if you could, I mean, there's a reason I wanted to hold, and I do appreciate what you're saying about no transferring of fees, but I think without the details being worked out, there are too many things that are possible. So if you're able to, I would love to see an example of guardrails put around item number 14. And I agree with Councilmember One on item 15, but if there's a way for us to collaborate with you on the substitute for 14, I mean, I would be happy to send over an example of what I think could work if that would help, and I'll gladly do that. But yeah, so I just wanted to better explain, if there's a way for us to get additional notice so that we're not discussing the details here, that would be really, really helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll be sure to do that. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion to hold on the table. Are we ready to vote? Let's do it. Thank you. This takes us to the first of our three Stitch Papers, 2501168. This needs to be substituted, but the caption's the same, it's an ordinance by Mr. Ferroki, Mr. Winston, and Mr. Dozier to amend the code section listed here so as to provide for an ad verum tax levy on property located within the Atlanta Stitch Special District, Service District, and for other purposes, I'll move to bring the substitute forward. There's been a second by Mr. Hillis. Let's open that vote. The substitute just cleans up some minor language issues.
Vote is open.
All right, the substitute's before us, Mr. CFO.
Good afternoon. So the three papers are related to a proposed SSD tax increment for the Stitch project. This is the project that connects north downtown over the I-575 interstate. We had a public hearing today at 12:00 PM. We have another public hearing with regards to this matter today at 6:00 PM and another one on the 24th, 21st at 12:00 PM. We have members of the team here that can talk about the project in more detail. The increment is proposed at two mils and roughly impacts, it's commercial and apartment buildings, there's about 330 or so units that will be impacted.
Let me ask this, and what does the city have in to this project to date?
So far, the contribution from the city has been 10 million through the TAD, and the team is here to talk about the federal funding that's already been supported and awarded and signed off on. They'll be in better to talk about those in detail.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bakary has been asked to be recognized. No? Okay. I would be particularly interested to hear from the council members who are representing pieces of this mega project. Well, it's after redistricting?
Yes.
That's going to change, right? All right, Ms. Bakary.
Thank you. Hey, Jack. So my district is very involved. I apologize, I was waiting, I have questions about 17 and 18, but I guess they're all together, so I can go ahead and just ask all of them. So obviously, very excited about the Stitch. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions that constituents passed along to me as well and that I had just for clarification. What is the source of funds for payment of these bonds?
Jack Seabee with Atlanta Downtown Improvement District, I'm the director of the Stitch. Good afternoon, everyone. The, we are not proposing any, any bonds as a part of this SSD.
Okay, so no bonds, so the Phase 1 of the Stitch proposal is not being funded by revenue bonds?
That's right. The, the funding identified for the capital costs for Phase 1 is coming from federal and local sources. This SSD funding is to pay for the operations and maintenance costs.
Got it. Okay, so that being the case, can you walk us through what, what of the funds allocated for this project are in hand, given that it is federal?
Yes. So we have around $170 million in federal funding across several different grant sources.
Can you repeat that number one more time? I'm sorry.
It's approximately $170 million. I can give you the exact amount later. But those funding sources are all from federal discretionary and formula funds that have been authorized for the project. And we are currently spending down some of those funds for the design work that's been going the last several years. So combined with local match funding sources, $10 million from the East Side TAD, $10 million that the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District has committed, and about $9.775 million that's been leveraged from Moving Atlanta Forward Funds to increase the funding for projects that are a part of the Stitch Phase 1 project. That all, all in amounts to around $203 million for capital construction costs for Phase 1.
Got it. And so I appreciate all that. So given that, are we, the Federal Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program, those funds have been dispersed because my understanding that that was where a large portion of our revenues were coming from, or funds were coming from?
Yep, those funds, we have a signed grant agreement with Federal Highway Administration as of January 16th, I believe, of this year. Those funds for preliminary engineering have been authorized. The second phase of those funds for construction are contingent on passing our National Environmental Protection Act clearances that are a part of federal highway projects. That process is on schedule to, to pass in Q2 of 2026. And so we're anticipating a construction start date for Phase 1 in somewhere around August 2026.
Okay. August 2026. Okay, so real quick, I mean, so you're saying the reconnecting communities, I know that we've signed everything, have all those funds been dispersed to us? Is there, you know, a risk of having them revoked? Or is this going to be like a USAID situation where they said they revoked it, but we actually get all the money?
So I think the, the situation is, we have those funds committed right now. Those funds are issued on a reimbursement basis. So, and actually, how this grant agreement is structured is that the Georgia Department of Transportation is the direct recipient of the funds. The City of Atlanta is a sub-recipient of the funds. So, you know, Georgia Department of Transportation also has a stake in this because there was a, a resolution before Transportation Committee earlier today for an intergovernmental agreement with GDOT. They are building the actual bridge for the park.
Does that mean that they're going to hold the air rights as well?
So the City of Atlanta will have the air rights for the park.
Okay.
Is, is how that works. It will be a, a long-term air rights easement for the park.
Got it.
But yeah, the, as of today, we, we have the funding authorized, we are getting reimbursed. So, you know, we can't, we can only, you know, guess where the federal funding environment will go.
Yes.
But our contracts, you know, we've been working with, you know, federal lawyers who are well-versed in these types of situations, and our contracts include stipulations so that if federal funding, you know, is revoked, you know, those contracts are contingent on the availability of that federal funding. So
Okay.
We will revisit things.
We'll take it as it comes.
Yeah.
And so I guess that was my last question. And I'm saying all this because I really want the Stitch to succeed. I'm incredibly excited about this project, and I'm very grateful to you and your team for consistently walking us through everything and giving regular updates. I think my last question is just, do we, can we predict how much future financing of the project is going to depend on federal money? And like, are there contingency plans the city can assist with?
So the, for Phase 1, we, I think this grant represents the largest federal transportation grant that the, the city and the region has ever been awarded, the discretionary grant.
Right.
So we, we feel like we have, you know, reasonably, you know, maxed out for the most part, our federal funding contribution towards this project. And this is for Phase 1 of three phases.
Yeah.
So, you know, future phases are really contingent on, I think, philanthropic sources, you know, corporate donations, small personal donations, other, you know, future financing. But we, we hope that by building Phase 1, much like the East Side Beltline Trail, it, you know, shows people what, what this can be and helps, you know, increase the momentum support for future phases.
We got to start somewhere, so.
That's right.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's the last of my questions. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple just 50,000-foot questions because I haven't really been that involved in this.
Sure.
So this would be owned by the city and operated and maintained by the SSD?
This, this would be owned, owned by the city, operated and maintained by a new 501(c)(3) organization that has a contract with the city via the Atlanta Urban Redevelopment Authority and, and other parties. That organization, it's, it's a similar arrangement to how the Beltline is governed with Beltline Inc. The 501(c)(3) is essentially Beltline Inc. and Beltline Partnership kind of combined. So that organization is also able to raise funds for the project. And the proposed governance of that organization would be made up of property owners and city appointees, property owners within that Stitch planning area. So it would be, you know, governed by the, the same folks who are paying into the SSD and receiving the benefits of the, the project.
Okay, so this paper authorizes the two-mil levy, right?
Yes.
And when would that start and how much do you anticipate that bringing in annually?
So the, the two-mil levy would start this year in the 2025 tax year. We estimated it's around, based on 2024 estimates, or 2024 assessments, that would be around $3.5 million for, for the SSD, or the Stitch organization in 2025.
Okay. So I've, I've heard from the Clyde Warren people, and they've shared their experiences, which is, I mean, this is a grandiose version of that. They cheerfully admitted that it cost twice as much and took twice as long. There's no reason to think that won't be the outcome here. So here's my main concern, which entity is going to hold that risk?
For, for cost overruns. So that's, it's a City of Atlanta project, ADID is a partner, the Stitch Inc. is a partner. You know, GDOT has, you know, is a partner in this, a non, a non-funding partner. So any cost overruns for the project would be up to the city and its partners to figure out a path forward, how to meet that. I will, I will say that, you know, the cost estimates for the project for Phase 1 have been I will say that, you know, the cost estimates for the project for Phase One have been based on, we, you know, did a pretty hefty contingency in those. It's a very, it's a very challenging, I think, environment for construction. So, you know, we are working towards better cost estimates, you know, for the project soon. And there's opportunity within Phase One to, you know, to tailor the project, to design, to budget so that we're able to build the project with the funds that we have in hand. And then for additional elements, you know, raise funds to fund those pieces.
All right, I'd like to ask the CFO for his response as to what's your interpretation of how the risk is, who's going to hold the risk is?
I think the answer to me was clear. There would be a shared mutual risk across the board with, obviously, it being a city project. But in case of cost overruns, I mean, we would have to have an in-depth, real tough discussion about longevity and how long we can fund things. We can only fund with the availability of cash that's in front of us. I do think the fact that this has been structured in a phased approach with Phase One being kind of the core elements of this helps de-risk a lot of that concern.
Okay, I mean, it's my opinion, and I'm part of a similar, smaller discussion about a similar, or not too dissimilar, Buckhead project. And I've been very clear there that I think the risk should be held by the people who will be enriched by this project and not every freaking property owner in the City of Atlanta. And so I'm not hearing any guarantees that that's not going to happen. So Ms. Bakteri?
Thank you. I actually think I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Wong because I think we have questions about the same thing. Just, I think you were talking about Items 16 and 18 relevant to bonds. And it's my understanding that Item 17 is related to bonds. So Councilwoman Wong, I will let you go ahead and ask questions that the chair will allow, and then I'll follow up if I have any add-ons. But I think I've asked plenty today, so it's your turn.
All right, so yeah, it looks like as I'm looking at the next one, the IGA or the MOU, whatever, however it's structured, does grant authority to issue debt on the project. And so first off, I need to understand what the governance process is in terms of that debt issuance. So who would have, who's at the table to say, yeah, we're going to issue a bond for X number of dollars? Who approves that? Is that the Invest Atlanta or a board? Is it the City of Atlanta? If someone could help me understand that, that would be okay.
Yeah, I'm going to let Ken Neighbors, who's been working on this, answer that. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Ken Neighbors, McGuire Woods, through the Chair, Councilwoman Wong. You're correct. The current anticipation is that the SSD revenue is what travels and what's the obligation of the city to fund the project. It's the initial vision that that will be for O and M and design and construction and engineering, right? Out of an abundance of caution and given the environment we operate in, we do allow for that to be monetized at a given point, but that would be with the oversight of AURA as well as the CFO of the city. So it's the normal intergovernmental structure where you all, through the IGA, set a limit in terms of what could be borrowed, at what interest rate and how long. And then we have to manage within those lines. That is not, however, the anticipation. With the, for example, with Beltline, it was anticipated that we would be going immediately to issue debt. That's not the case here.
Yes, but we're granting the authority to do it. So we have to kind of explore that scenario as part of this evaluation. And so, did I hear you correctly in saying, so the SSD funding, while we are authorizing it to be for O and M, could end up flipping to basically support a bond?
Yes, sir. So all of the capital stack has many elements. It's the upfront, design, construction, engineering. Then you have CapEx potentially, right? And then you have operating and maintenance costs, right? We're focused, I think it's fair to say, Jack, we're laser-focused on the O and M side of maybe design and construction, but there is flexibility, right? The better this thing does, the more opportunities you have to address, I think, some of the concerns that were visited by council.
Okay, what you just told me makes, starts to make me really nervous because while we're being told and you don't intend to, it's still, the opportunity for it to happen still exists. So again, we've got to walk down this path a little bit. So help me understand, things go not as planned and we do have, the decision or the wish of the project is to issue bonds. Who makes, what's the governance structure? Who makes that decision? Does it take a council action is really what I'm trying to get at?
So right now, you've given us parameters that we have to operate within, right? Traditionally, how this works is that is, there's an underwritten process to get to with financing obligation. What is the cash flow been? Ben, that goes really through the CFO as well as the leadership of Invest Atlanta. The leading edge there would be AURA. This is in the Urban Redevelopment Agency. It's got the correct powers, same structure.
So Aura has the ability to issue the bonds without having to come back through council, only going through the Invest Atlanta Board in terms of an approval or not even that?
Subject to delegation parameters and really, as the process works, really subject to vetting by the CFO of the city.
So CFO gets to decide whether or not it requires an additional approval or?
And customarily with these, we do bring them to city council. And then it's eventually approved and the closing is done at AURA. So you've seen these before, like the Johnny White Park comes through city council to approve.
Right.
And then the conduit issuer will take it on and go from here.
But am I hearing correctly? That's just by the grace of the CFO? I mean, that you actually don't have to do that and you could just go and do it. But because we have the relationship we have with you, we're getting that bite at the apple. That's starting to make me even more nervous.
Happy to bring it back. Financing is not contemplated. Again, it was just an added tool in the toolbox. Happy to add, make a clarification in the IGA or your legislation that final financing must come back for council approval.
Okay, yeah, because on page 20, it does explicitly cite the city as one of the four entities that would be on the hook for something like that. And I would think if there was any debt obligation incurred, to have that not be a formal process of the city's would be troublesome for me.
Just point of clarification. Remember, it's a conduit financing, so the city can only pledge that which it has. It's as and to the extent the SSD revenue is realized, right? There's the responsibility that we always have of saying, we're going to underwrite this very carefully. There's always coverage required and it's always a really good snapshot of what is actually happening on the ground. But like I said, I think we can make it easy and just put in the paper that it must come back to council.
I've been looking, in the council staff notes, it says that that potential issuance is capped at $250 million.
That's correct.
I can't, if you could at some point just highlight offline where that is in the agreement that I've been looking for, but I can't find that either. Okay. I, I'm fine with the SSD. I'm fine with the current intent of the SSD. I think I've voiced where I get, start getting uncomfortable is this ability to then go even leverage it further unless we explicitly have authority to be part of that process. So with that, I'm, yeah, let's continue to talk. Obviously, we have till April 21st on this one, so whatever happens out of this committee, like I said, I'm good with the other two papers. This one gives me a little bit of heartburn, but I think we can get there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then just to, through the Chair, by night, it's page six of, I think it would be 1169. That's the project inducement ordinance. You'll see the Whereas Clause where the delegation parameters or financing parameters are listed. It's kind of the third to the last Whereas Clause on the bottom of that page. And then that's, that's kind of drilled down in the actual, the findings or the resolutions. And again, we can proffer some language to make sure that any financing comes back for final council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, there's the 250. I found it.
Other questions or comments?
All right, so since we've only sounded the first one, I will make a motion to approve on substitute, and that is the ad valorem tax levy. So I'll make that motion.
All right, there's been a motion made and properly seconded. I'll explain in advance my upcoming no vote. I feel like we're being asked to get a little bit pregnant and then we'll see how it goes. Let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Our item is approved on substitute. That takes us to our second item, 2501169. Yeah, that's a substitute. The caption's the same. Let me read it. This is an ordinance by Mr. Faroki, Mr. Winston, Mr. Dozier, authorizing the City of Atlanta, the Atlanta Development Authority, Invest Atlanta, the Atlanta Urban Redevelopment Agency, and the Downtown Atlanta Community Improvement District, together with the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District, Inc., collectively ADID, to proceed with the implementation of the Stitch project within the boundaries of the Atlanta Stitch Special Service District, providing for definitions, authorizing and approving the financing of the project by Aura and ADID, whether directly or indirectly, as necessary or appropriate, authorizing the preparation, use, and distribution, as the case may be, of an IGA between and among the city, Invest Atlanta, Aura, and ADID, among other documents and agreements in connection therewith, providing for parameters for said financing and for other related matters, providing for severability and for other purposes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve on condition of a substitute at the April 21st meeting that incorporates the language we discussed regarding additional council authorization of any bond issuance.
I think first we need to.
Oh, bring forth the substitute. Sorry.
So let's, yeah, there's been a motion made and seconded. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? Vote is closed. The substitute's before you.
The motion holds.
Okay, Mr. Wong's motion is to approve on substitute on condition of receiving the substitute containing the items mentioned. Right, second by Mr. Hillis. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open?
And the vote is closed? Fine, motion carries. 2501170 is an ordinance by Mr. Faroki, Mr. Winston, and Mr. Dozier, creating the Stitch Special Services District, designating the boundaries of such district, providing for definitions and for other purposes. And there needs to be a cleanup substitute for that. The caption's the same, so I'll make that motion. Second by Wong. Let's open that procedural vote.
Vote is open? And the vote is closed?
All right, the substitute is before us. There's been a motion made and properly seconded. Let's open the vote.
Would you repeat the seconded, please?
With Mr. Hillis.
Okay, thank you. Vote is open? And the vote is closed?
All right, the eyes have it. That takes us to items 19 and 20, which we can take as a block. 2501173 is an ordinance by SHUK, waiving the competitive source selection provisions contained in listed sections of code to ratify services rendered in connection with a co-op agreement with wireless voice data services with T-Mobile and authorize the mayor to execute the Fifth Amendment to the agreement on behalf of AIM to extend the term on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed six months, retroactively from Jan. 1 of this year through June 30th of this year, in an amount not to exceed $652,254. And for a further period not to exceed six months, effective from July 1 of this year through December 31st of this year, contingent upon the renewal of the underlying state contract in an amount not to exceed $652,254. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the sources listed. Let me read the caption of the companion piece, 2501174. It's an ordinance by SHUK waiving the same sections of the code to ratify services in connection with the co-op agreement listed, wireless communication services, voice and data services with Verizon, and authorize the mayor to execute the Fifth Amendment to the agreement on behalf of AIM to extend the term on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed six months, retroactively effective from Jan. 1 of this year through June 30th, in an amount not to exceed $2,202,619.55, for a further period not to exceed six months, effective July 1 through December 31st, contingent on the renewal of the underlying state contract in amount not to exceed $2,202,619.55. All work being charged to and paid from the listed sources. Mr. Ferguson?
Good afternoon, council. This is basically going on a month-to-month for these two contracts for both T-Mobile and Verizon. We are currently in the process of working on a brand-new agreement with all three carriers and then going into that agreement with different pricing and all this sort of thing. But for this right here, we just are on a month-to-month because the agreements expired at the end of December.
Questions or comments? Mr. Wong?
Wait, so is it a direct procurement? I mean, because the caption references that we would be utilizing the state contract again for subsequent work, or is that not the case?
So these right here are for the, are for our contracts that were just expired.
Okay.
And then we're just going on a month-to-month with them until we get our other contract in place.
All right, so we're going to continue using the state contract until the end of this term, which is the end of the year. And then at that point, the RFP would be a direct, we're going to wean ourselves off of the state contract and do a direct.
Correct, we did a direct with them.
Cool, thanks. If you don't have a motion.
That's fine, I'll second that. So let's open that vote if there's nothing else.
Vote is open? Vote is closed?
The eyes have it. We're going to take the next fours as a block. These are all council carryforward papers, first of which is 2501176, an ordinance by Mr. Wong, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $500 from the District 6 Carryforward account to Midtown Neighbors Association to support the Midtown Garden Stroll pursuant to the section of city charter listed here. 2501177 is an ordinance by Mr. Westmoreland, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $1,500 to the Atlanta Technical College Foundation pursuant to the same section of the city charter. 2501178 is an ordinance by Mr. Westmoreland, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $3,000 to the Midtown Neighbors Association pursuant to the same charter section. And finally, 2501179 is an ordinance by Mr. Winston, authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $1,000 from the District 1 Carryforward account to the South River Watershed Alliance pursuant to the same section of the city charter. I will motion, I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Ms. Bakteri. Let's open the vote.
Vote is open?
Vote is open.
All right. Both items are approved. That takes us to resolution twenty-five R. thirty-two eighty-six. It's a resolution by Mr. Hillis, authorizing mayor designate to execute sole source agreement, which is listed here, with Schneider Electric Systems USA pursuant to the section of the code listed on behalf of Watershed Management for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $4,167,355, subject to and expressly contingent upon adoption of the FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty budgets. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the sources indicated, and we need to hold this as we have not yet received the I Pro. Mr. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman Shook. And I don't know if anyone here from, was someone here for watershed, but maybe CFO Bala can answer, but, uh, this is a, uh, good, uh, time, I believe, to bring up where we are with collecting from the multiple municipalities and other governments that owe money for the capital upgrades and operations and maintenance of this, uh, very important, uh, sewage treatment plant, upwards of $22 million from DeKalb County, and I believe if you add all the other local governments up, uh, somewhere around ten, possibly $10 million. So where are we with that, CFO Bala?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, Deputy Commissioner Jonathan Williams step out, but, uh, they made good progress with contacting, um, all the municipalities. I believe DeKalb's, um, next commission meeting will be taking up the item. I'm not 100% sure. I'll let him confirm when he gets back in here.
Uh, do, do you know if that'll be, um, partial or a full payment?
I'm, I'm not sure. Probably partial.
Okay. If he returns, we'll circle back around. Um, but, uh, something been made yet. Motion to hold.
All right. I'll second that if there's nothing else. Uh, let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
All right. Items held. Twenty-five R. thirty-two ninety's, resolution by Shook, authorizing the re-employment of a city retiree, Jackie Reagan, in the position of executive assistant in the city auditor's office pursuant to the section of the charter listed here for a period not to exceed 130 business days. Compensation will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein in an amount not to exceed $36,400. I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Wong. If we don't have any questions, let's open that vote.
Vote is open.
All right. Item passes. We're going to hold the next three items. Let me read all three captions. Uh, twenty-five R. thirty-two ninety-one is a resolution by Shook, authorizing the CFO to refund customers for overpayments to water and sewer accounts in the amount of blank. All funds should be charged to and paid from, et cetera. Uh, number twenty-eight is twenty-five R. thirty-two ninety-two, resolution by Shook, authorizing the commissioner of the Department of Watershed Management to adjust water and sewer service charges on certain customer accounts in accordance with the section of the code listed here in the amount of blank. And twenty-five R. thirty-two ninety-three is resolution by Shook, authorizing the mayor to execute special procurement with blank on behalf of D O F pursuant to the section of the code listed here for a term of five years with two one-year renewal options. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. And my motion is to hold all three items. Second by Wong. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
All right. That takes us to our duels. Twenty-five R. thirty-two eighty-three is a resolution by, uh, Ms. Boone, Mr. Hillis, and Mr. Bond, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to execute a collective bargaining agreement with Local 134 International Association of Firefighters in accordance with the section of city code listed here and the State Firefighters Mediation Act, number listed, for a term not to exceed one year and for other purposes. Motion to approve by Hillis, second by, um, Bakhtiari. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote and then applaud.
Vote is open. And the vote is closed. Seven eight zero nays.
All right. Is, is Mr. Bailey here? He, he was here earlier. Okay. Well, congratulations, um, to everybody who was part of this baton death march, um, and especially to the firefighters, because the administration people have swapped in and out several times because of the change in administration, but it, it's been the same firefighters, uh, who have, who have made this happen. So we appreciate you. We hope it works out. Uh, I, I hope this is not a case of be careful what you wish for. So congratulations. Um, that takes us to our held items, first of which is found on page sixteen. It's item forty-four, twenty-five R. thirty-one fifty-six, resolution by Ms. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute special procurement agreement, number of which is indicated, with urban forest carbon registry, doing business as City Forest Credits on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience pursuant to the code section listed here for a term of 40 years in amount not to exceed, uh, $232,908 to expand the city's, City of Atlanta's carbon credit program. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the accounts listed and for other purposes. This requires a substitute, and I will move to bring one forward. Second by Mr. Hillis. Uh, let's bring that forward. The substitute merely has the correct contract number.
Vote is open.
Okay. Has everyone voted?
No. The vote is closed?
All right. Substitutes before us.
What's the source of funds? The carbon credit?
Okay. Ms. Bakhtiari.
Thank you. Uh, if we have anybody from the Office of Sustainability and Resiliency, if you could speak to where, I mean, I love carbon capping, so if you could speak to where the funds are going to be coming from, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about the fees associated with, yeah, absolutely. So this is called the Sustainable Projects Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for, uh, that, that's under our purview. Um, it is a fund that's been set up primarily to be able to fund, uh, revolving projects, uh, energy efficiency. Uh, it's, it's meant to be able to replenish itself once it's used, and so it's a, it's a fund that has, uh, that we're able to utilize for the upfront fees, and then when you have the carbon credit sales, uh, you're able to replenish those funds, and then, uh, we have, uh, a, a, a cost, or I should say, a revenue share with the Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, regarding, um, the proceeds, uh, where DPR would use the majority of it, and then the other, uh, would go towards replenishing the funds and other sustainability programs and projects.
Is there an estimation on what the profits or proceeds would be year by year?
Uh, so the, the, we can approximate for sure. Uh, we are, we're thinking just around what, uh, current, uh, similar urban forest preservation, uh, carbon credits versus, you know, your regular real forest credits. Uh, you know, rural forest credits can go from two to four dollars, what we've seen in the past for these sales, uh, because they have higher human, uh, benefits, stormwater benefits, urban heat, all the things why we love our trees, uh, can go for a premium. But a, at the end of the day, uh, what we've seen is about 30, $34. Uh, but it depends on your, your, your buyer. You can have somebody who, uh, who has employees that are based here in Atlanta, they're based here in Atlanta, and they might, uh, spend more for that project. And so as much as it is about being able to predict, it's also about being able to, uh, effectively market, uh, these credits well, uh, to the marketplace.
Thank you. Um, we think $232,908 is enough, given the complete gutting of the EPA and the environmental disasters we're seeing on a unprecedented scale through here and the rest of the country.
What was the amount that you said?
$232,090, uh, $232,908.
So, yeah, that, that's, uh, for the up to max amount. If we, if we sell, uh, we, we're thinking about, it'll be about the same, uh, for, uh, for this project. We haven't fully submitted our project documents, so I'll just approximate. If we made a million dollars, uh, that portion, uh, would go towards, uh, City Forest Credits up to the 10%. It's, most carbon credits, uh, companies, or I should say, um, organizations, usually everything is upfront. Uh, City Forest Credits is a little bit different. They have some fees that are upfront, but they're very minimal in comparison to everything else, uh, and they get paid primarily from, you know, the, the percentage on that. So, um, I think even, even a million dollars, even $2 million, uh, we're talking about an existential crisis. We're talking about the resilience of, uh, our, our, our city as a whole. Uh, and, and just urban, uh, tree preservation, uh, and, and the maintenance and stewardship that you have to put towards the, the parks, uh, that we already have, um, you know, it, these are going to be helpful to cover some costs, but it's certainly, uh, not going to cover what, what's been, what's been frozen at the, the federal level.
Yep.
But, you know, trying to make, uh, trying to make revenue out of, uh, any innovative ways that we can for, while also advancing the sustainability, climate, and, and, uh, urban forestry goals that the city has.
Great. Um, I think I'll close on this statement, and I appreciate that, Mr. Seidel. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, I think that many of us can agree, or at least I will, say that climate change is arguably the greatest threat that we face, especially in this city, given everything we're trying to do to create resiliency and sustainability. Is there a way, I know that Councilman Wong and myself and others, is there a way for us to get updates, because we've had some issues making sure dollars stay committed to their goals, especially when it comes to sustainability and resiliency? So if we could also receive updates, um, on this program, see how we could assist, uh, preferably, you know, at least biannually, that would be a huge help.
For sure. And I think it could also be built into the existing quarterly presentations, um, that our office gives.
That'd be great.
And so...
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That would be very helpful. I appreciate it. Uh, motion to approve, yes.
Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Seven eight zero nays.
Takes us to what I believe might be our final paper this afternoon. Twenty-five oh eleven thirty-one, it's an ordinance by Shook, authorizing the CFO to write off water and wastewater accounts receivable. Such accounts rendered uncollectible in an amount not to exceed $5,610,847.98 on behalf of Watershed Management and for other purposes. And I stand the preferred motion is to file this. Um, I see Mr. Williams here, so what can you tell us about why we're filing this?
Jonathan Williams. I'm Deputy Commissioner, Office of Watershed Management. I think we found an error in the addition, and we wanted to make sure that it was absolutely correct before we brought it forward.
So will, will, we see a corrected version when we return?
The next meeting, when, when we're available, we will have that.
Can we amend this one?
Sure, we can. I don't, I don't have the corrected, uh, amount with me, but I can get it in short order.
Well, then alternatively, we can send it forward on condition of receiving a substitute. So if there's no objection, I'll make that motion. Uh, second by Mr. Amos. So let's...
Thank you.
...open that vote. Oh, and then, Mr. Williams, I know Mr. Hillis had a question.
Mr. Hillis, you had a question?
Once we finish this vote here.
Can you guys hear me? I'm wobbling.
The vote is closed.
All right. The ayes have it. Mr. Hillis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, D.C. Williams. Um, while you had stepped out, uh, we held, um, the RM Clayton-related paper, twenty-five R. thirty-two eighty-six, and I thought of a good moment to request some updates as to where we are with collecting all these, um, I know somewhere roughly around 22 million from DeKalb, and if you add all the other local governments up that, that utilize our services, somewhere around, I think, 10 or so million from other governments. So where are we with collecting those?
We're, we're in the process of sharing that, going through the, uh, clarification of any questions they may have about that. We expect that to be coming forward in the near future.
Okay. I'll look forward to, uh, further updates, uh, in the coming weeks.
I mean, I know in the DeKalb matter, it's been any number of months now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So for the DeKalb piece, I know it's been many months.
It has been.
So obviously, I mean, they have to legislate that on their end.
They do.
And in addition to that, whatever that timetable means, they occasionally do have questions and occasionally objections about our methodology, right?
And that's happened. We've gone back and forth over some of the issues associated, particularly with the $10 million amount, but we're in the process of getting that closed now.
Okay. Well, we're, we are looking forward to getting that resolved.
So are we.
Yeah.
We don't, what is our, our goal here before we bring out the big guns? Like, they need to submit this money within the next one month, two months? What's the...
I would say, uh, two months, given the, the break that's getting ready to happen. We're very comfortable with where we are. Uh, it's, it's about them legislating it and agreeing to what we've provided to them. There's no ambiguity from our perspective.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks so much.
Sure thing.
Mr. Evans?
I believe that's all of the legislative items.
Thank you. Uh, to my...
We have one more?
...colleagues, I will say, um, enjoy spring break.
Chair Shook, I'm sorry, there is one more. That, that, yes, the item that was referred from CDHS. So you, you have a printout in front of you, twenty-five R. thirty-three eighteen. CDHS, uh, referred this item to FEC.
Thirty-three eighteen?
Yeah, this is, uh, twenty-five R. thirty-three eighteen, resolution by CDHS, authorizing mayor or his designate to issue Task Order 12 for the contract RFP indicated, citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and construction services with Harris and Smith LLC for Cone Park Recreation Center on behalf of Parks and Rec in an amount not to exceed $557,300 to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed and for other purposes. I'll move approval.
Second.
Uh, second by Hillis. Let's open that vote.
This is committee. This is committee. Vote is open. And the vote is closed. Seven eight zero nays.
All right. And now we're done. And so, um, to my colleagues, happy recess. To the rest of you, uh, make the most of your elected official free time. We adjourned. We've adjourned.